Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Any changes or additions to this evening's agenda, counsel?
Yeah, I'd like to add two items. One, I went to a conference in Ankeny, and I'd like to discuss that. And the other is, we still have a concern with the neighbors down on Taylor with the old Nelson Nursing Home location. And I brought it up at the last meeting, and it isn't on the agenda this time around, and I'd still like to make a few comments about it.
Okay, we'll put that under committee reports.
Thank you.
Anything else? Now then, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have just three items. We have approval of minutes from the August 25 council meeting. We have approval of the July finance report, and approval of claims in the amount of $253,895.76. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next council will move to our appearances before the council, and I see that Travis Squires just arrived. Are you ready, Travis?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Travis Squires from Piper Jaffery is going to lead us in a discussion about our upcoming bonding activity. So go ahead, Travis.
Thank you. My apologies for rolling in a little bit late.
Okay.
Good sense of information this afternoon. I know this is one of those things, it's not always convenient to get information at the last minute, so obviously, there's no decisions regarding this information. It's simply a review and discussion and kind of a primer for what will occur, let's say, over the next couple of months and decisions really can be made. I want you to like pass it on. Okay. Tonight, I thought it would be good, just to kind of prep the council on a few conversations that have occurred over the last week, just regarding some of the financing options with respect to the upcoming recreation project, and how all those pieces might tie together. Obviously, this is, I'd say, kind of a complicated project from a funding standpoint, and you have a lot of different moving parts. And so just a nice overview, kind of hopefully tied up on a little bow by the time the night's over, and then have some kind of direction from the council as to at least which route makes the most sense, or at least now you'll know maybe some of the questions that you should be asking. So, you know, from a pure overview standpoint, my goals tonight is kind of go over some of the proposal feedback for the first $3.75 million that we began talking with some of your local banks about. Talk a little bit about the overall financing plan, package, how it relates with the $3.75, what's available to spend, where. Talk a little bit about the overall project budget, as kind of we see it coming together with the good news about the grant funding. Talk a little bit about project expenditure timeline, because obviously, one of the things that will come up is, well, now that you're rolling on the project, you're going to start writing checks. When you start writing checks, money starts going out of the city's accounts. You want to make sure you have a good understanding of how that cash flow will work, as far as when do you need more bond money, when will the donation money be available for the project. And then from there, just talk a little bit about next steps. It won't be as long as the summary, hopefully. A little bit about proposal feedback. We did speak with all your local banks and received some interest from them. As far as local interest, you know, the goal, obviously, is, well, can you get a conglomeration of local banks to put together a package that meets your needs over the term that you set forth? And, you know, obviously, one of the terms was you had a 20-year loan issuance, which does become a little bit difficult for bank financing, just based on the way that they hold bonds on their account or loans in their account. So, one of the things we did run into issues with is the ability of the bank to lock for a full 20 years. So we're kind of working through that. So we did get feedback from Midwest One Bank on a million, Iowa State Bank on $800,000. Isle Grove is also interested in a piece. First National at this time isn't in a bond-buying position, but that's not to say they'll be completely out, we're just, you know, trying to gauge investor feedback at this point in time. As far as rates are concerned, you know, about in line with where I expected they would be on a full 20-year basis. When they shorten it up, the rate isn't quite as competitive, but that's not to say that we're done with communications with the bank, and we've still just got to have some dialogue. So as far as local interest, it's there, but just getting the right pieces together, making it work for them and work for you is kind of the next step on that. As far as other Iowa interests, you know, we did kind of broaden the scope, talk with a couple other Iowa banks that are typically buying this type of, you know, general obligation debt. And we did receive kind of various feedback. A lot of them, you know, outside of kind of the local presence are, you know, they're drawn to some of the concerns that, you know, that, well, the rating agency issued this report and maybe don't have as good of an understanding as to what's actually going on locally. So we did get some, a little bit of kickback there. Some said, "Well, you know, get back to us after local interest is dried up," or if there is not enough interest. On the national level, there were a couple banks that were interested in taking down the whole piece. Their rates were semi-competitive, you know, maybe not as aggressive as you'd hope, but at the end of the day, if you were sitting with that proposal and that was your only proposal, it's probably as good as you're going to do in the conventional bond market. So, you know, overall, as far as this placement approach, you know, it appears to kind of play out as we thought. I'd just say we're not quite done with the process. So that's the update. Some of the rest of our conversation will kind of drive the rest of the timeline as far as we're concerned, because, you know, obviously, this is one component of the project, and you may need banks to step up on other pieces, as well as perhaps what we kind of call some bridge financing with some of the, you know, the donations and how you anticipate those might come in. Any questions on the feedback that we received from local banks? I can get into more specifics if you want. You know, at this point, I think it makes sense to still try to exhaust finding 20-year fixed-rate debt for the city, if at all possible. Your other option is to take what we kind of call variable rate debt, where you might have your rate locked for 10 or 12 years, and then, once you get to that 12-year mark, you're left with either resetting your rate or refinancing. But refinancing now is just an eight-year loan. So the likelihood that you can still match your rate on that shorter loan term increases significantly. So it's not our first choice to go that route, you know, but obviously, you know, finding a cost-effective method for financing at this point in time is obviously important. The other thing I would say is the hope is, you know, obviously, you know, as a city, a couple of years down the road, where you've been able to show to the rating agencies that, yes, it was just kind of a blip on the radar that's been corrected and approved and processes in place going forward, that you come back and you're sitting in a better position with the rating agencies and able to access the markets of lower interest rates by comparison to where you are now. Obviously, market rates can move and change from time to time. You know, the next piece that I put together was simply what we know of your current capital projects. I'm on page four of this now. It says, "City of Fairfield Financing Plan Capital Borrowing 2014." You know, these are the projects that we've been dialoguing with across the city. Obviously, there's a few that, you know, aren't needed for financing, you know, Project Two. I've now kind of broken up the recreation project, kind of called Component One, Two, and Three. You know, One is obviously the referendum, and then Two would be the amount that, you know, kind of replaces the land purchase component that's been talked about, part of your hearing that was held back in August. The third component then is the sidewalks and safety measures, again, part of that same component paid with urban renewal financing revenues, not paid with property taxes and debt service levy. And then you also have a couple other projects that are on our radar, mainly potential land purchase with sewer improvements, you know, as that plays out. Obviously, no timeframe on that yet. And then Component Number Four is obviously, is there going to need any type of financing in place for anticipating donations on the project? Whether that's something with the bank, you know, kind of talk through what those options look like from a legal standpoint before really going into what that looks like. And I'll just say, this is really preliminary, you know, it's not meant to be something that catches you, you know, by the side of the face, but it's something that has kind of been talked about over the last couple of years, just what does this look like, you know, as the project plays out? You know, the obvious, you know, perfect scenario is that all your donors step in and come in the door tomorrow, they hand you their checks and their pledges that they're planning on, you know, committing over the next couple of years, and you have that all up front to walk across the bank. Then you can sign your contracts with the builders, and then you just go on your merry way. Everybody knows that's not how donation projects work. So as far as anticipating what those cash flows come in, it's just going to take, you know, some time in working through those pieces. And, you know, I'm working with Ed and Joy on that now. And I'll just say, this is kind of the primer for that, just so when we come back, maybe a month or two from now, and start really talking about nuts and bolts, you can be a little more prepared for that conversation.
Travis, yeah, so let's just stop there for a second, because we haven't really had that conversation with the council, and sometimes want to make sure that everybody understands that aside from this, you know, what's being proposed in the $3.75 million in borrowing, very shortly after that, there's going to be, you know, a request for borrowing for these anticipated funds for the pledges. Now, the pool pledges are generally three- and four-year pledges. I know the intention of the committee is to, once all of the money is assembled, let's just say in the next 30 days, when we're going to be reporting back to the CAT board that all of the private funds have been finished up, then word will go out to all of the those who had made pledges, asking them to, if they're in a position to give their full pledge up front or some percentage of it, to do that. Once we have an idea of how much cash is going to be available from the pledges within year one, then we'll know what the remaining balance is probably going to be, and we would be looking to finance those. I think that's also a conversation that we should have with the local banks. I spoke with Tom McMahon about this today, and he will have that conversation. Tom's going to be back in town on Wednesday, and he's set up to talk with you this week as well, Travis.
Yep.
Anyway, I think that the clearer the picture we have for all the borrowing that's going to be necessary for the project and the likely time period is something that they should all have at once, but that's, it may come back in two stages, as Travis is describing here, but that is going to be something that would be anticipated also. And this would be much shorter-term borrowing. So as you recall, two years ago, we looked at a schedule of borrowing and what that would look like in terms of our percentage of indebtedness, and we'll look at all of that again, and obviously, it'll be a shorter term, but I think we're still going to be fine in terms, we're going to be in a safe zone in terms of our borrowing limits, but that's something else. Part of the discussion we'll be having once we get to these stages. Go ahead.
Yep, and, you know, the other thing I would add on that is, and you'll see this on the next couple pages, is I've kind of thrown together a sample cash flow on, I mean, you likely do not need additional money, and the donations will be able to float, and I don't anticipate really you look at any money potentially till the spring of '16, when you're actually finishing up the project. So it might just be, at the end of the project, you have to bridge the gap. You might set something up, you know, legally, you could set something up that would be kind of considered a drawdown loan. You know, with a drawdown loan, you might set up the line of credit with the bank, but not actually take draws until you get to that point, thus minimizing the amount that you have bonds outstanding and interest cost out. Again, that's also something that, you know, until that draw is made, it's not debt against your debt limit as well, so.
Question for Ed. Do you know how the CAT grant is paid out? Is it a lump sum?
No. CAT grant is basically going to be paid as reimbursement.
Okay.
So they want to see bills for completed construction, and then they will make payments. So that's another reason why we need the float.
And in the schedule. It's going to be in the schedule, and you'll see that, so.
Probably at our next meeting, we will have the approval of the contract for the whole committee, and all that schedules on there.
So to kind of highlight where we're at, if you're on page five, and this is, you know, rough budget numbers of about $8.8 million, you know, shown on the left, kind of the uses of funds, you've got the outdoor pool, indoor gym, other costs. Ignore my rounding, you know, if it's $50,000 higher or lower, you know, this is just kind of big picture at this point. The estimate from this 2014 financing, about $3.275, again, the $3 million referendum, and then the infrastructure improvements from the urban renewal area. The donation and pledges currently around $4.525 million does close that gap right now at $8.8 million. We'll talk a little bit about, you know, obviously, everybody anticipates, being in the great city of Fairfield, that all the donations come in as pledge, but you know there's going to be instances where, you know, someone can't make their fifth year, they've lost the job, car broke down. Those type of items may come up. So we just want to talk a little bit about how do you plan for that contingency as well. So as far as the project expenditure timeline, and you'll have to bear with my rough approach to kind of throw together a cash flow, you're going to see a lot of numbers on this page, on page seven here, and I'm going to focus you on the top left, where it talks about the donations. So total donations to date, I'm going to say, you know, $4.525 million. The percentage of donations that this model says you're going to receive is 100%. So that assumes everybody comes in. Follow that over, we're just throwing out raw numbers on a timeline. So let's assume you have 35% up front, and then over the course of Fiscals '15, '16, '17, and '18, you receive those in equal amounts. So you have 35% up front and 16.25% thereafter. So that's how we're looking at the revenue stream right now. Expenditures, then, go ahead and jump all the way to the right. You know, I've called other, you know, that kind of includes your site, infrastructure, the sidewalks piece, the land purchase, the $2.15 there. Then you have pool and gym. And alls I've done is said, well, the pool, $3.7 million over 12 months, starting pretty much immediately. The gym, 18 months, $4.8 million, starting next spring. So I didn't go to the extent to do, you know, the typical bell curve, you know, this is just, it's real simple, hopefully, at this point in time. What you get then, and I apologize, I didn't number these columns, but if you look kind of in the middle, you see funds outgoing for all of these projects, so you can see potential draws coming out. Now, the goal is that you match up your revenues coming in, so that if you look at the cumulative invested balance, about the fifth column from the left, that that number always stays positive. If that number always stays positive, there's no need for any sort of anticipation or interim financing with the donations, the donations cash flow through the life of the project. So what you see here, bond funds incoming, that $3.275 about November, you know, you might have it in mid-October, but, you know, at this point, somehow, it's already after Labor Day, and we're almost into the fall. So assume that is there, November 1. You see the donation funds incoming, you assume you've got some up front, or a significant amount up front. And then over time, you can see out through Fiscal '18, you can see the rest of the donations coming in, you see the grant funding coming in towards the end of the project. I just threw it as a lump sum, likely it's probably three months later. Therefore, you may end up with a little bit larger deficit balance than what you see here. Overall, looks, cash flow looks pretty good until you get to about a year from now. You see it start to dip in the red. At some of those lower amounts, that's something the city can probably, you know, inter-fund loan, take care of. However, when you get out to be in $1 million, you know, a maximum of about $1,206 in this model, all of a sudden, now you're talking some real money. This is where you start talking about interim financing pieces. I provided a separate model on the next page. The only thing I did was assume that you ended up 5% short on your total donations coming in. This does create a little bit larger cash flow deficit balance as you're going through the project, but then also leaves you $226,000 short at the end of the day. This is something that, obviously, you don't want to occur, but at the risk assessment level, something that you need to at least be thinking about. At the end of the day, if this occurs, what are our options? We're not there in answering that question yet, but, again, I said, some of these things are going to lead to the questions that you should be asking down the road as a council. Any questions kind of on this real rough example cash flow that I put together?
I guess the only thing I'd mention, and, again, this is a model, so it's not that certain, but the million-dollar grant that we're receiving from CAT, $100,000 of that is designated towards the pool, so we've only, yeah. So most of their, the remaining $900,000 is going to be coming probably later in 2015 and into 2016.
Yeah, that's right. Regardless, you know, the next step in analyzing and fine-tuning this is, as I'd said, you know, once you get the final submission, contract signed with the CAT grant, being able to go to the donors and start determining kind of a cat, anticipated cash flow. You know, you have something rough right now, but it needs to be really fine-tuned as we go through there. So the last piece I'll kind of talk about is, you know, the legal options for funding projects. Is there a need for how long, for how much? Apologize, I forgot myself a question mark there, obviously rushing through this, but, you know, it looks like on paper, there's a need just based on those assumptions, and remember all those assumptions that I rolled through. For how long, you know, and that's really going to depend on how quickly the donors can come through with the actual cash in hand for the bank. And then for how much is going to be driven, not only by the donors, but is how quickly your construction schedule goes. Legal options, so this is just going to be general information. Voted general obligation debt, you know, and this is when you're thinking, well, what and why are we even talking? This doesn't make any sense. You know, the easy option would be, well, we'll just go out, it's a project, we'll vote for it, and we'll ask the public for this borrowing to be able to close this gap on cash flow. And you're thinking, well, that doesn't make any sense, because there's not going to be any tax impact to them. Why would they vote? Well, this is the one legal, one of the legal options that you would have. So to be remiss, we didn't talk about this on the call on Friday, but, you know, obviously, that's kind of the obvious. You could vote to fund the project, and then you'd be paying it off in three years with donations. I mean, you know, from a standpoint of, does that make sense, from the city on both a political level and a financial level, you know, I don't know if that option really makes much sense. The other one would be what we call essential corporation or corporate purpose options. Limitations are going to apply. So this is going to be like your infrastructure. You can put in infrastructure up to a certain amount, you know, as a central corporate purpose project. Those are things that you can do on any type of project. Limitations apply certainly as far as amount is concerned. This other option we call enterprise revenue bonds. Your enterprise revenue in this case is the pledge of donations. So what you're looking at here with this option is that you would sell a revenue bond to the bank, and the bank's sole security pledge in this case is the anticipated collection of the donations. And in effect, it works out to be, it's an unsecured loan for, you know, in this case, for the bank. I can't, you know, really speak to the attractiveness of that from the bank's standpoint. You know, while a lot of your donors can certainly probably be under it, not at an individual level, you know, there's not a clean pass-through for them to come after individual donors, you know, if the city's at the front of that, which becomes the issue. It's an enterprise revenue bond. If the revenues don't show up and the donors pull out, they can't come through you to get to the donors. They're just left holding an IOU that you have no money to pay. It's not to say that that isn't an option, it just is one that needs a lot of talking through with the bank. You might end up setting up, have to set up a reserve fund to anticipate some sort of donation loss. So you may end up actually borrowing more up front and having this reserve fund sitting outstanding. The issue being, you know, you don't have the collateral to back that up unless you raise, you know, an extra $300,000 in donations.
But as we discussed, Travis, this is a small manageable group of donors. It's not a very large group, and the percentage of the total in the number of top donors is quite substantial.
Yeah, which is going to be.
Which is good. I mean, I think, and again, the due diligence for a bank on those individuals or entities is probably fairly easy to do.
Yeah, that due diligence is fine. The issue becomes in their pledge, in that they can't reach through to get to that point in the event of a non-payment. You know, so from a credit, political understanding, you know, they're going to be there. From the nuts and bolts and how do I get paid if something goes wrong, that's where their concern is going to break down. Which kind of brings you to the last option, which would be urban renewal bonds, and I'd say urban renewal notes, whatever you might want to call them. But again, utilizing your urban renewal powers, the authority that the city has under your urban renewal plan and amendments, to be able to anticipate that borrowing and provide kind of a backstop against the borrowing. The advantage you see over this, the second option, is that, you know, if there is additional increment available within that area, it can also be used to prop up any donation losses that might occur. So instead of the city writing a check, per se, out of the general fund, the local option sales tax, or whatever option you might have, because keep in mind, next spring, you're going to be looking to sign a contract that says, "I'm going to pay this contractor up to $4.8 million for this project." And there you are, sitting with that legal contract outstanding, and what's your backstop? Under the enterprise revenue bonds, as a city, your only backstop are other city funds, or the ability to access the markets. With urban renewal bonds, it does provide a little bit of a backstop for you, potentially some cash flow, you know, through that interim in the event of donation loss that might occur. Again, donation loss, we don't anticipate that occurs, it's just one of those, what's my risk tolerance, and what option makes the most sense? Obviously, I said earlier, we're not going to ask you, you're not going to be asked to make a decision, probably even at the next time we discuss this. This is just kind of a primer to get you thinking about it, so it's not something that's all of a sudden dropped on your lap, you have to make a decision within, you know, you might get the information on Thursday, and you've got to make a decision at your council meeting one day. So we want to get this out in front, it's just kind of a due diligence process, allow you to think about this, because I know we've gone over a lot of information. Perhaps your question comes up in the middle of the night, you're starting to think about, you know, 11 o'clock at night, nothing better to think about than city finance issues. You might write down your question or email me. I guarantee you, I probably won't respond that evening, but I'll get back to you as soon as possible. You know, in my mind, the consideration's at the bottom, you know, the desired structured financed by potential purchasers, and then this is coming, you know, what are the banks looking for for security? You know, if they're fine with underwriting the loans that pass through, and they're not worried about it, certainly the enterprise revenue bonds, you know, does make quite a bit of sense. From the urban renewal bond standpoint, you can have with or without general obligation backing, depending on really your revenue stream availability. Either way, the urban renewal bonds is going to count against your debt limit, enterprise revenue bonds would not. So there's another consideration, but if you're looking at, well, how am I going to encumber my debt limit over the next five years? Either way, that debt's rolling off. So, you know, from a long-term debt limit perspective, probably not a big issue between either one of those options. And then ultimately, it comes down to desired risk profile by the city. What do you, I mean, what do you want your risk profile? Any sort of financing carries with it some sort of risk. Some options are riskier than others. Obviously, the voted general obligation debt, not really any risk for Obviously, the voted general obligation debt, not really any risk for repayment or being able to get the money back, because you can levy property taxes for it. With voted general obligation debt, obviously though, there's different risks to consider. All of a sudden, you've now, you've talked about a project, and now all of a sudden you've put political risk out there, because there's no reason for you to actually vote. You've already told the public what you're going to do. The donors are coming through with their donations. The simple reason for doing the voted general obligation debt is because you're not willing to consider another option. I view that as the easy option from the math standpoint as far, but from the political side, I don't see a lot of reason for pursuing that option. You know, obviously, not all decisions are political, but from the standpoint of what is the council consistently told the public, that you're going to vote $3 million of bonds. Those are going to be the bonded commitment of the city for the taxpayers, and beyond that, it'll be funded with outside resources and other revenues. I think either one of these bottom two options certainly do allow you to, to do that. From here, I guess if there's any questions, you know, I'd say there's, there's no action steps or items for approval on tonight's meeting. From my standpoint, we're going to be continuing our dialogue with the banks and figuring out the structure that they desire, and then from there, determining what other outsourced, outside entities are needed. It may come down to the local banks are really needed for this second unknown piece, whereas it might be easier to look outside the local banks for the more conventional, long-term, 20-year debt.
Let me just ask Melanie, Melanie, what, what is our anticipated schedule for pool construction payments? When would they likely start, and when would we want to be sure that we have our bonds sold?
The pool should be starting work next week. With a majority of it, they'll have concrete going on this fall, but I see most of the big ticket items happening first part in the spring.
Okay.
So with a completion date, you know, I would say 95% of the funds spent by May, and then just some contingency held for the punch list items.
Okay, but still, we're, we're going to have bills as soon as-
October.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. So that, just keeping in mind that I think we want to keep, we want to move the process along and definitely have the cash available.
Yeah, you know, from that standpoint, you know, if it's, if it's off by a week or two because of meeting schedule, you can certainly look at adopting a reimbursement resolution at the beginning of October to-
Great.
Cover, to bridge you until November 1. So I don't anticipate we'll need all the way till November 1, but at the same time, it probably should be the plan. If you get pay apps, construction started, and you approve your first pay app beginning of October, you know, probably not, you're going to be within your 30-day window by November 1 and that.
Great. Okay.
Well, thanks for your time.
Thank you Travis. Any questions for Travis? Thanks for coming down tonight Travis, very useful and-
Thank you.
Look forward to our next steps.
Yep.
Thanks. Next council, I'll ask Councilman Doug Flornoy to introduce our guest this evening.
Yeah, so I'd like to introduce Dr. Richard Fersman. He's the president of Remeyer Fersman LLC, an executive search firm. This is our third firm we've had in, and our last one we'll be interviewing before we make our decision about which firm to hire in the next week, I think. So, Richard?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
I'm going to give a short presentation and leave some time for questions. I know you've had a couple of proposals, one with the correct mayor in the back, so I know I sent out, I think, one, a couple of proposals, so I-
No offense taken.
No, well, thank you. That's what I get for doing two things at the same time. I want to go through our proposal a little bit, and I think what I've done is put within this framework, the questions that were, that I think you're, you're trying to get at, and so I want to make sure that I've covered all those. The firm was founded in 1991 by Jim Remeyer. Jim has done hundreds of searches in Iowa. He has since retired. I bought the firm in 2009. I joined it in 2000, late in 2006. Since then, I've done just over 100 searches, and that not only includes city managers and administrators, but also positions such as engineer, police chief, fire chief, department heads, executive type of positions. Our team is fairly small, we're a small group. Rena Fersman, you see there, I think you can pick her out. Dick Schrod is here, and aside from, and Dick was a city manager, retired from Knoxville, not too far away from here, a couple of years ago and joined us then. And we've done a couple of dozen searches together as a team as well. And outside of him being Army and me being Navy, we get along pretty well, so. I want to talk a little bit about the process. The process really starts with getting to know you very well. Now, you see in front of you, this is just one example, and I pass some of them out here to, to the people in the, in the audience. What it's designed to do is be a description of the community and a recruitment profile. So when an individual who might be interested in the city, who doesn't really know a lot about us, can pick this up, whet their appetite a little bit, understand what the city is looking for, the qualifications, the type of leadership, the type of people you are, what the culture is of the organization, so they then have an idea of whether or not, yeah, maybe I would like to participate in the process. And what we do in this phase is we talk to everyone on the council, and we'll also talk to a number of your staff as well. I like to have individual meetings with you, talk about what your expectations are, what you're looking for, what might be missing or had been missing in previous administration. One of the things you asked about, committee structure. You have a strong committee structure. I think when you're, when you're going through the process of hiring a position like this, everybody needs to be involved with the council. There are things that a committee can do outside of the entire council, but when your, what I will call CEO is going to be before you, they understand that they're working for the entire council, and so I think the entire council needs to be present during the, during most of the process. Would count on you to be there. And you can also include the community if you want to do that, have some dialogues, maybe a, a community forum or something where we invite people who we trust as council members, and if you want their opinion, we can include them as we're developing the profile as to type of candidate that we think would be successful in our community. So I went through the position profile. Obviously, we go through the reporting relationships, the education, the experience, and it becomes a consensus document. So once you approve this, this is also how we filter candidates. So when we go out on a search and when we're collecting these and we're reviewing these, we're going through this as who most closely matches what we've agreed on as a council, where we should go. Now, what about, you had a question on here for us, what if we do Iowa only? We're considering, you know, restricting it to Iowa. Why would we do it? Well, we would do that because if they're familiar with Iowa laws, their learning curve is going to be shorter. That would be the only reason I would do it. Anywhere from the Midwest culturally, we have found that they fit well. We've also have had many successful placements in Iowa, in Minnesota, other places where we've worked, where the persons come from outside the state. You're also going to get transplanted Iowans who want to come back. People, for whatever reason, pursuing their professional careers have left, they're now looking at coming back to Iowa. So I wouldn't limit your search. It's a compelling argument to say that they're, they're ready because they know the Iowa laws. I'm telling you, the learning curve for somebody in this field that's bright, that you're going to be considering, typically it doesn't take very long at all, and you're going to want the best and brightest. So I would advise you, again, to do a nationwide advertisement. Here's a list, and I'm sorry for those of you who are further away from the screen. I did a little, a brief review of some of the cities we've looked at, and also when, I've noticed that we're not getting as many candidates as we did a couple of years ago, and you can probably understand why. With the economy having turned around somewhat, the number of applicants are starting to fall off. But you're still going to get a good field of applicants, I believe, for your community. Normack, Iowa, with 9,000 population, was advertising between 90 and 125,000 population. We had 113 applicants in 2012. Independence, Iowa, just north of here, with a population of 6,000, advertising between 80 and 100,000, received 48 applicants, and that was done not too long ago. So the two things that are, well, there's, there's three things. What's the stability on the council and the community? Number two, your location. And number three, what kind of pay do we have with this? So your reputation, the pay and allocation are driving factors into how, how your recruitment goes. Those are the main things. And so what I will do with you, Dick and I will do with you, when, when we're putting this together, I will be able to predict, I think within five people, how many applicants you'll get by the time we're done. And I may, I may ask you, well, how flexible are you on your pay? If you're in the, if you're in this kind of range, I, we can pretty much be able to predict what you're going to get. The screening process, there's questions on how do we evaluate? Well, once we get in the resumes and the introductory letters, we go through those and then we use this as the filter, like I said, and we select anywhere between 15 and 20 candidates to interview. We will meet with them one-on-one. We'll also put them through writing assignments. I also give them a, a leadership profile or a management profile. It's called insights, you saw it on the, it's, it's not used as a filter, it's used as a discussion point for us to go into, how do you manage people? How does this, how does your profile reflect on, on your past performance and what you want to be as a manager of individuals? So we put that together, and we put it together in a report, and you saw this in front of you. We'll list out and identify the candidates for you. There'll be a report along with their cover letter and their resume for you to review. We then come together with you and go over these 10 to 12 finalists or semifinalists, and you pick out the five that you want to interview. Phase two is up, up to you, how much you want to get into it. If you want to do references and credit checks and criminal background, we'll do all of that on each one of your candidates, or if you want to wait until you have a final one. I've gotten away from recommending it all the time because in five, over 500 people that I've backgrounded, I've had one show up red line, where I've taken this person, I've X'd them out of the process because of their background. Their, their, anytime you get into this kind of business, people's backgrounds are so visible today on Google and other places, as you can imagine, and the access is so easy, it's so hard to hide any kind of activity that might be unscrupulous. So should, should you do it for your final selection as, as a safeguard? Absolutely. I think you do your due diligence. Do you, how in-depth do you want to go through throughout the process? That's a discussion we'd have later. But that's just one of the things I have found that it's, we're doing it and we're not finding much. Phase, so during, during that phase two, you're also going to be, we're your partners through the interview process. The interview process I, I recommend is two days. The first day is you get to know the candidates on a casual basis. You get to meet them two-on-one or one-on-one and talk to them. I'll call it the kitchen table kind of interview, where you're, you're not really grilling them as much as you are, what's this person like? How would it be like for me to work with them? Do I get a sense that I trust them? Do I get a sense that I would enjoy working with them on a professional level? That evening, I recommend either have some kind of reception with the public, and the reason you do that, and you have a prepared statement by them. How are they going to handle themselves in front of a group? It's a big part of the job, or it can be, and you want to be able to see that. Possibly then have you as a group sit down and have a dinner with them. And I put all the candidates together when I do this, so we can see how they handle the interaction with other candidates, how they handle the pressure. So we put them through a lot of pressure situations, and you can observe this throughout the process. Saturday, when you come back together, here's your candidate right here or at a table, and it's a formal interview process. I also have them do a workup for an agenda item and stand right here and present to you as if presenting an agenda item, so you can see, how do they, how do they construct it, and how are they at presenting it, presenting their argument? Then we follow that up with the questions for them that we will write for you before the interview process. If you want to change the interview questions, feel free. But most people find that through the years of doing this, that we're, we've identified some pretty good ways to structure questions to get the most value out of that interview. When you're done with those five, at the end of the day, we will help you debrief. Kind of what did you see, what did you feel, what did you know or observe in these people, and help guide you through the decision-making process. If you decide on someone that day or on a following meeting, you can then count on us to help you with the negotiation piece of it. And that's nice because we want the relationship to be positive right from the start, and if, if there are negotiation items to go through, I'd rather be the bad guy. Dick would rather be the bad, or the intermediary to handle those things, because we've done it, we've done it, we've done it over and over and over again. So that's basically the process. In the end, part of my doctoral research was what happens once you hire the person? You pull up into a car, you drop them off at the, at the corner and you say, good luck, here's your desk, go find your way through the minefield. One of the processes that we've designed is to onboard the individual and get a immediate work plan for them, expectations. We'll set that out anyway. We, we go a step further and we'll come into the city with them and meet with you once that person is hired to set out that work program so the expectations are known. How are we going to measure it? How are we going to know this person's doing a good job, other than we just feel good about it? So there's, you want a professional basis for this individual and their start, and we guide them on, on their entrance into the organization. That's, that's the hardest part, when somebody is first started, so. I think a question was, I guarantee, as we guarantee our work, if you follow our process, we guarantee that the individual, if anything happens with the individual and you need to remove them from office, we'll replace them.
For what time period?
A time period of 18 to 24 months.
Okay.
Yeah, eight years from now might be a little-
You'd, you'd talked about helping that person transition into the city, and that you would work with them. What type of commitment are you making to the city in order to help that person transition in more smoothly?
Well, what I, first of all, what I do once we've identified the individual and we've had a contract with them, I go deeper into the councils to, what are your expectations for this person now for the first month, for the first three months, for the first six months? I also sit them down with you, and we have a very frank conversation on what happens on a four-three vote. What happens when we have a split council, in other words? And on an action item, am I, as your new administrator or manager, am I supposed to drag my feet? Am I supposed to attack this problem head-on? What happens if the mayor comes in, sees me every day, has taken an enormous amount of my time, and is starting to bleed my productivity? How am I supposed to approach that subject? What happens if I'm being, what happens if one council member's gossiping about another council member in my office? How am I supposed to handle that? How are we supposed to work through these items? What happens if my performance isn't up to par? Who am I going to hear from? Because I want to know right away if I'm doing something and I'm stepping in something. So it's more the dynamics that I walk through with you, and we work this out the day I start. So, or the week I start. So I am not stumbling over these things, wondering, why is this guy in my office every day? Or why, you know? You'd be surprised to it how, I'll say Joe starts, or Jill, and a member of the public comes in and says, I want to talk to you about the issue that I had with the previous administrator and this fence issue I have with my neighbor, and they said they would fix it, and they didn't. And now I'm wondering if you can do that for me today. So they get immediately drawn into issues, and I like to draw those out, find out where they are, how we can process this, so we don't sabotage this person before they even get a foot in the door, or they're, you know, get their start. And so those are the types of things that I'd like to cover with you right when they're starting.
Thank you.
I.
Dick?
Well, I just wanted to let you know that I do speak. Actually, all I wanted to say is I retired from city management, and I was hired through the Brimire process to come to Knoxville. But my city council, when I left, when I retired from Knoxville, hired Brimire first one to come in and find my successor. So I've been through this process with them, both as a candidate and a contracting city. And once I found myself in a position to do so, I approached them about working for them because I believed in their product. And I truly enjoy doing this kind of work. And I'm proud of the fact that of all of the city administrators and managers I've helped place in Iowa, only one has left. All of the rest of them are still there. And the one who left was by mutual agreement with a change in the council that was after two years. So I'm happy about that, that I think we do a good job of finding the right person for the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Dick. Sorry, I was ignoring you. I didn't mean to do that. I asked him if he wanted to talk. He said, no, just go ahead and do it.
He knows me better than that.
I mean, Dick was primarily hired for his looks and charisma. And, no, Dick has been really an asset for us because as he was in the management profession here, he got to know just about every manager in the state and in the region. And that wealth of knowledge, he's been able to keep up with state association. And I think I know a lot of them, too. But once I met Dick and realized, wow, you know just about everybody here, don't you? And that has been a real asset for us.
I'm sure.
I just threw this chart up, just for your, it is more fun than anything else. I've charted out managers from around the country and looked at, mostly Midwest, how their personality styles and what makes a good manager. And we found that the vast majority of managers come from financial backgrounds and are really good with numbers and figures. And that is the, that is the route a lot of them take into the profession. And blue would be your thinker, introvert type. Red would be your more fiery, highly opinionated type. And we don't see a lot of those.
Those are all of our elected officials.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There can be that little debate there.
We got that side covered.
Yeah. Well, a lot of people, you know, I felt, well, if you really want to move fast, and you really want to get a lot done, and you really want to be highly opinionated, you really ought to run for council and not, but business is usually the, you know, if you're running a business, and people coming from the business background have a tendency also to get frustrated in, because it's such a deliberate process in government, and things don't move nearly as fast as you're probably aware of. Talked about onboarding, community participation, a timetable. I just threw this together as a, this is absolutely meaningless because we wouldn't be starting January 28th. You'd probably be starting this month. But from, if you started this month, you would be seeding someone around the person you. So it's about a week to put together the profile, four weeks to advertise, two weeks to review those, interview the people, put together a report, another week to meet with you, and then set up interviews. And then if they're working right now, they usually have a 30- to 45-day notice before they can leave their job. And then one of your questions, manager versus administrator, I think from a skill standpoint, when you're talking about it, none. Even though you're, an administrator doesn't have complete hiring authority, they better know how to do it, and they better be really good at advising the council. So whether you have full manager authority, whether you have limited to administrative authority, the skill set is the same. I don't differentiate at all when I'm looking at that. And I think, would you agree, Dick, on that? Yeah. That's it. I hope that was helpful.
So it was a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for addressing a lot of the questions that we had proposed ahead of time. Council, any other questions for our guests tonight? Regarding, this question that has come up also, regarding salary range for a city our size, what would be your recommended area that you think would attract the best candidates?
Why?
And we're not holding you to it, but just as an idea.
Well, you know, you're not going to be paying what they pay in Des Moines, right?
No.
Okay. Well, with that consideration, then, I think communities this size in this part of the, are anywhere between 90 and 115.
Okay. And if we started the search right now based on either resumes of people that you know are sort of in that area of interest if the right position came along, or people who are actually actively looking right now, would you say that you have some candidates in your mind right now that might be interested in a city like this and would qualify?
Well, yeah, actually, Dick and I were actually talking about that on the way here. You're also in a good time period, and whoever you pick should be doing this and is going to the Iowa conference.
I would do a city's conference.
Right, which is in two weeks, I think.
Yep. And it's important to have a presence there to be letting people know, by the way, this is, this is something we're actively recruiting for now. I mean, we're going to be at the conference, and I would have it right there, you know, something like this.
Yes.
If it's not completely done yet, at least a preliminary profile there in front of them, meet with people, start the recruiting process right away. But, yeah, we do have some. So make sure, if you, if you're going to that, make sure that word is out.
Right.
Whoever you go with.
Okay.
Because that's a, that's a great place to recruit.
Yeah.
If we were to offer a salary in the range you're recommending, how many applicants can you vote, or number of applicants you think we might be looking at?
I think you're, well, based on preliminary and the stability of your community and what I've seen, and Doug filled us in real nicely, too, and some of the highlights of the community, you're going to be right around 50.
So your process of screening is to get that down to about 10 or 20 for us to look at?
What I would do is take that 50, we would divide it up and talk to about 18 to 20 people. And based on those interviews and further screening, we give them writing assignments, too, some of which, a lot of which you'll see.
It's interesting.
We further evaluate then and then put this together to give you the top 10 to 12. Then we go over that with you, and, you know, we'll come and meet with you then, and you'll have the report, be able to read up on the people, and then ask us questions in addition to that. So we can, it's nice to see how their demeanor is and how they handle themselves, et cetera. A lot of people will know, but we don't know everybody. So. And we'll discuss with you, too. I always like putting in a report so people who are up-and-comers, who are sort of the diamond in the rock, not necessarily haven't proven themselves yet as an administrator, but they've been exceptional as a department head someplace or an assistant. And with a little runway, they can get off the ground, and they will be exceptional people. Because you're going to find, it's not always what they know, it's who they are. It's the type of character that they have, it's how they get along with the community, it's whether their DNA really is Fairfield DNA. And that's going to be more important to you in the end than if one person has done two more budgets than the other.
Council, anyone else? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
And I think Doug has probably told you, we will probably be huddling within the next week to make a decision, and we'll get back to you as quickly as we can.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to take these binders back with me.
Yes, yes, yes.
I have, you can keep, please keep the profile.
All right, this is very nice.
Doug?
Very good, Jim. Thank you. Enjoyed the conversation, your presentation.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Doug, are you going to compare, get a spreadsheet together to show comparison of these costs in there, like, how long will place people up to, so we can look at it in a snapshot view?
I'll say hello to them for you.
Okay.
I will do my best, yes. I'll get something together.
Okay. Because that would be helpful.
I'll do something like that for myself, anyway, so.
Yeah.
Just the main points, like, you know, the guarantee and the salary and the cost.
So their à la carte options and things like that.
Thank you. Okay, Council, then we'll move on. Our final appearance this evening will be Doug and Grace White, and they have a request for a beekeeping box in their backyard. Doug, or Trish, if you could come up to the microphone, please, and explain your request? Yes?
Hi, I'm Doug White. My wife, Grace. We, we were, about a year ago, we were traveling into Asia, and we became acquainted with a bee master and began learning about bees. So when we came back, we met another local bee master, and so we became interested to study their behavior and habits a little more. We're not interested at this point in starting a business in that area, but what we would, we wanted to have some where we could study them. And so we were told that there's an ordinance that you have to get permission from the city council. Well, we were told originally that we just have to write a letter. So I wrote a letter and submitted it, and then I got a call from Scott saying that it had to come before the city council. So if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you. So Council, you've all seen the copy of the letter, and the request is for a small bee box or container, which will be for research and not for honey production.
Right.
And it will be small, and it is contained in a backyard.
It's about that long, the size of an eight and a half.
Eight and a half by eleven sheet, 22 inches deep.
Yeah, about the size of that sheet of paper and about 22 inches long. And so there's four frames in it, and a little hole where they can get in and out. And what we do is we, we would just, we have a little plastic container, and we can just go and take a few, three, four bees, and we can bring them in and study them, and then we let them go.
Okay. That's it? All right.
Do you need a motion?
Pardon me? Yeah, we need a motion to approve the request.
Oh, that we approve the request.
Moved by Fornoy to approve the request. There's a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Hallie. Any discussion or any questions?
How big a yard is your yard? You state in the letter, it's all fenced in.
Yeah, we have a fenced-in yard, and so no children or pets come in. And it's, it would be in the yard, in the backyard, not in the front yard. And so it's not really visible to anybody. The fence in the front is a high picket fence, so nobody could see into the yard.
Okay. And how long do you plan to keep it?
Excuse me?
How long do you plan to keep it active?
Well, actually, it's, it would, as soon as the cold weather comes, since there's not very many, they won't survive in the winter. So we would have to return them to the bee master, and he'll integrate them into his hive. He has hives just outside Fairfield here in a field, and we've visited them and seen them all. And so, you know, in the meantime, we're studying and learning more about handling them and all. But at this point, we're just interested in studying a few and understanding their behavior, and we're interested in, well, bees are a pretty important part of our ecology. And if we lose the bees, we're going to be in trouble. So we're interested in their survival. It's very interesting that they can survive in the cold Iowa winters, and we find that they can produce heat out of honey and keep themselves warm in the wintertime. It's really amazing. So.
Okay.
And how many, how many would likely be in the colony?
I don't know, maybe a few hundred.
Okay.
There's a queen, and just a few hundred. So there's not enough to produce enough honey to survive, so.
Right. But a wild hive might have more than that?
Well, you know, a usual hive is about this size, you know.
No, no, that's a commercial hive, but I'm talking about just a wild hive.
I don't know.
Might have that many bees in it as well, so it's.
Yeah, might, might, but.
Yeah, it's not all that out of the ordinary, right?
Yeah. We find, what we've already discovered is that there are several different types of bees around Fairfield, and we're learning to identify them. It's very interesting.
Okay.
But if we decide to, you know, increase, you know, and have a larger number of bees or a larger hive, we won't do it in our yard. We would arrange for someplace outside of Fairfield.
So this is kind of a study project?
This is just a study project at this point, yeah. Yeah, if we wanted to start producing honey or pollen or something, we would go outside Fairfield.
Thank you, Doug.
Have you spoken to the neighbors about this that all live around you?
Excuse me?
Have you spoken to any of your neighbors about this?
Any what?
Any of your neighbors?
Neighbors?
People who live around you? Have you spoken to any neighbors?
Oh, no. Well, yeah, I've mentioned it to some of the neighbors, yeah. But I haven't, you know, I actually, you know, told them about it. The bee master we know is at the farmer's market, and he sells honey and so forth. So that's how we got to know him. And we've talked with some of our friends and neighbors about it. Nobody has any problem about it. So, and if there's, just let us know if you have any concerns or interests or rules or regulations, just.
Well, typically, the reason bees are not allowed within city limits is potential allergies to stings, or you don't generally see them in a residential neighborhood like this.
So. There are a lot of bees around Fairfield.
Yeah, intentionally, intentional. Yeah, intentionally, intentional bee, you know. So we've given variants before, but they were for non-residential neighborhoods in the past, so it might be a good idea for you to warn your neighbors and find-
Oh, yeah, we'll let, we'll let our immediate neighbors know.
Or inform your neighbors. Well, give them a heads up, you know.
Yeah, give them a heads up, but, you know, you really don't, the way they go, they just fly off, and they would just go within, actually, they can go a couple of miles in a radius, and they just come and go and gather pollen, so it's really interesting. We have flowers in our yard that have, they have bees and butterflies and other kinds of strange creatures come and feed on them. It's amazing.
Would you think that maybe it would be November when you'd need to return them?
Excuse me?
Would you think maybe November would be around?
Yeah, probably when the first frost comes, then we would, they won't be there all winter, no. So, do you need to know again if we bring them back in the spring?
I don't think so. I mean, if the vote is successful, I don't believe so, no.
If there's no problem, then-
I mean, I think the council would be-
Yeah.
Council would be voting based on what you have presented, which is the small operation.
Right.
If that were to change in some way, we would ask you to come back and let us know.
If we want to change, we'll let you know, and, okay?
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Mr. White? If not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next counsel, we'll move on to our action items and resolutions. First will be the awarding of the Highland Street Improvement Project, and Melanie has a bid sheet for us to go over.
All right. This project is Highland Street, from Madison South to Jackson, about a block and a half. The intersection with Monroe is not getting done, and the intent is that both sections will not be torn up, so that the people on Monroe will not lose access during construction. There were two alternates, one for concrete construction, one for asphalt. On alternate one, we received four bids. The engineer's estimate was for $98,000. The low bid was Shipley Contracting of Burlington for $89,292.64. Next was Wesley Barton Construction of Mount Pleasant at $103,23.50. Third was JDM of West Point, Iowa, at $106,597. And last was Pilcher of Atamua for $179,975. Alternate two was the asphalt bid, or the asphalt alternate. There was one bid, the engineer's estimate was $118,000, and the one bid was from Norris of Atamua at $141,445.95. So our recommendation would be for Shipley Contracting for the concrete alternate for
And timeline, Melanie, on this project?
When I talked, when I talked with Brad, that he was going to see how the next couple of weeks went before he gave, whether it was going to be fall or into the spring. Hearing it rain and seeing it lightning out the window, I think, don't hold your breath on this fall.
Okay. Thank you. And first of all, we want to thank all of the contractors that participated in the bidding process. We always appreciate the, I think that we do have options and choices, and the work that they go through to provide those. Though, the recommendation then is to award the contract to Shipley Contracting of Burlington, Iowa. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any other discussion?
One question, Melanie, the tree replanting, is that part of this contract?
No, there'll be a separate expense through. I haven't really talked with Rebecca. Should we take some quotes on that? I guess direction of quotes from different landscaping companies?
Yeah, I thought we had a policy.
Yes, we do.
The street reconstruction project wasn't deemed complete until all the streets, all the trees that were moved were replaced. So if this contractor's not responsible for that, who is?
The city will hire a separate company to do that. I don't, no offense, Jessica, I really don't want a concrete person putting the trees in.
Well, it's probably not a good idea.
So we'll bid that out as a separate process.
Be there a long time.
So internally, we'll deem it complete when we have-
Yes. Rebecca's gotten ahold of most of the property owners, and many of them have come in and selected their trees already.
Good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger?
Kaelin? Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next counsel, we have the approval of a construction easement with Log, L O G Enterprises for the pool project. And Melanie, as you would describe this as a staging area for construction that's being allowed?
Yes.
Okay. So we're just asking for this agreement to be approved between the city and L O G Enterprises.
Yep.
This is on the corner of Ninth Street and Washington?
Oh, the staging area is Ninth and Adams. It's part of the old D O T lot. Log Enterprises is Power Wagon, and so this temporary easement is the value of $1, and is a temporary basis for up to one year after the city's acceptance of the project. And this, this is only towards the pool. We did speak with Carly Nelson, and they felt like it was a little too far away from the gym site to be benefit to the gym contractor, which is why we've tied it only to the pool project.
And Melanie, this is relatively close to the lot that the city owns that will gain east-west access to the new pool site, right?
Yep. Not quite adjacent, but close, yes.
Okay, so entertain, okay, moved by Hallie to approve, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, Melanie. Next counsel, we have the final reading of ordinance 1121. And again, this is ordinance giving the city authority to collectively levy taxes in the, for the urban renewal area of 34 West Business District, which runs from about Ninth Street down to Walmart. This is a public hearing, so we'll declare it open at this time and ask if there's any public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the public hearing, and ask for a motion to approve the ordinance from the third and final reading.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I just wanted to call attention that there are several members, residents in the South Main and Iowa area avenue, area that are concerned about property at 1200 South Main. The condition of the property, it has been vacant, we had a recent event there, involved the death of a young man. Scott and I have talked about having the property inspected, and he has contacted the mortgage company, and we're waiting for permission for them to get into the building, and you will come back and give a report to us about that condition, to see if there's anything that's warranted in that direction. We wanted to communicate that to the neighbors that that is going on right now, so we will give you an idea of what condition that property is in once we get the permission to go on there. To mention that next, a week from tomorrow, there's a luncheon that's being held at the Civic Center that's been organized to bring together all of the taxing authorities, hospitals, schools, city, county, to have a discussion about what the outlook is for some of the needs in a lot of the different areas, and how it can affect tax levies going into the future. I'm sure there's going to be some discussion about our current tax levies and how they're compared to other cities our size. We'll be attending that to represent the city where we are and give an explanation about our use of funds and our revenue resources, those that we have access to and those that we don't, and what we can and can't do with our money. But I think it could be a useful discussion for the public to get an idea of where we are going. So, not that we have had any particular discussions as a counsel about what our maybe major priority projects are going forward. We do have a five-year street capital improvement plan. We have, obviously, projects that are, we're undertaking now that are ongoing that give us a window into how it's going to affect our property taxes and levy over the next 15 to 20 years. Beyond that, if anyone has any ideas they'd want to pass along to me to give to this group that we're meeting with, I'm more than welcome to your suggestions, so. Next, we'll move on to our committee and board reports. Property committee. Is there a report?
Property met, we met last Tuesday night, and actually, the items that we discussed, at the present time, there's no decision that the council needs to make. We worked with Scott Vaughn, and there are two homes that presumably the city attorney will be notifying them. We asked them to come to the property committee meeting, and they did, neither of them appeared. And both of the homes are definitely in need of something happening, either by the individuals who own them or by the city. So as soon as something does occur, we'll have to come to the council and ask you for some approval at that time. But in the meantime, that's the only thing that happened at property.
Okay. So similar type discussion that we're having with this property at 1200 South? Yeah, okay. Very good. Next, Melanie, you wanted to give a report on our blue zones. Were you going to report on the individual registrations number?
No.
Okay. Well, I thought I just mentioned that while you were coming up, that we're, you know, part of the requirement for qualifying as a certified blue zone is that we have, what is the percentage of population? 16% I think of the population registered? No, more than that?
Fifteen to 20.
Yeah, 15 to 20%. Which, the number is about 1,650 people registered. We're down to about 100 people now are those last. And again, that's just an individual commitment to do something in your life in the direction of creating greater wellness, whether it's in your home, your business, or personally. So encourage anyone who has not registered, it can be done very easily online at bluzones.org. And Melanie, you attended a conference on complete streets.
Yes. The conference Stephen and I attended together, and it was in Algonah. Dan Burton was the main speaker, and had a lot of good points, made me think of things a lot differently. But one of the main messages he was getting across was getting the city budgets in line with the city values. One thing that he showed was the Indiana license plate that shows kids first, and are we really putting that into our city budgets? And a couple of questions he asked us along those lines were, what's the youngest age you see walking without an adult holding their hand? How safe do our kids feel walking on the streets, on the sidewalks? And using that as a measurable goal, as you see that age decrease, you know that your town is becoming more walkable. What's the first impression of your community from a walkability standpoint? And does your town have a mission statement about supporting active transportation? Another concept that kind of applies to the SODD project, so again, I was really glad to attend, is that walkability is more than just infrastructure. The security gives you a walkable, security gives you a walkable community, and you actually want to feel like you're being watched. And so having open windows, or glass windows on your storefronts, we saw a picture of a bar on the main street in Algonah, and, you know, it had a little peephole is all, and they were just saying how that doesn't feel very safe because you feel like you're out on the street all alone. And another thing they mentioned were canopies help people feel safer because it helps you feel enclosed, along with the pedestrian lighting that when you did the downtown nodes, you added the pedestrian heads. All those things add to a walkable central business district, so great job on where all that was headed. From the engineer side of me, the things, this statement really got me thinking was, you can move more people more efficiently at slower speeds, meaning when you take into consideration more than just the cars, when you get the pedestrians and the bicycles out there, you can move people more efficiently. He, so he pointed out a lot of ways that engineers had gotten it wrong from a pedestrian standpoint, but it made me think about, as we're developing and spreading out as a city, how we're developing those streets and the subdivisions. It made me start thinking about some of our outskirts roads, outskirts roads such as Libertyville Road, Suburban Heights, 185th, how all of those areas start to get developed. One thing with your neighborhood, Darren, that, though, as I started to look into it, I realized how good his neighborhood actually is, and Steve will talk more, it scored low on this one application, but traditional subdivision method is a lot of cul-de-sacs, one way in, one way out. It adds up to a longer way to get to one place, it makes you more vehicle dependent. But what they did over in that neighborhood was the pathway connecting the school, and I mapped it out before I came, that pathway cuts out three-tenths of a mile to the schools compared to if you were walking along the streets. So just as we're doing the subdivisions and developing around the city, those kinds of things, the Harlem City Administrator was very, they had a similar situation, but that path to the school would have cut across the country club. And the city administrator did not want to take on that, that battle, that discussion. And so, and it added, I don't know, probably half a mile to the walk to school by not adding that shortcut. So, you know, we've got some good examples going on in Fairfield, but it really got me thinking about moving forward in development. But one thing we learned about was an application called Walk Score that Stephen's going to talk about.
Well, I'm going to add a little bit to what Melanie said, and then I'll talk about the Walk Score. I was sort of wearing two hats up there. I was invited by Michael to attend as the chairman of the Trails Council, and so I was coming at it from the perspective of, mostly bicycling I was thinking in terms of, and I was, I was really pleased to find out that, I mean, he took a lot more comprehensive view of transportation than just bicycling, or just walking, or just driving. It was kind of the idea of getting all of these modes of transportation together, so everybody can get to where they need to go efficiently. And Melanie mentioned the kids, I don't want to leave anybody out, but I think his point was that you need to design your facilities for your oldest folks and your youngest folks. So that's kind of usually the two ends of the spectrum that you need to make your facilities usable for. So one of the interesting things that they brought up was, Melanie used the word app or a website, it's called Walk Score, and it's, I think it was some grad school students from Washington State, is that right? I think they were from Washington State anyway, put this together. And what it does is you can type in your address, and it'll analyze all the routes there are to amenities around your town, and then they score where you live based on how walkable and accessible your house is. And so it's not necessarily based on how many sidewalks there are, it's based on what there is around you and how easy it is to get to services. So 100 is a perfect score, and zero is the worst score you can get. So we looked up a few addresses, just to kind of see how they scored. One we looked up was 1105 Lakeview Drive. It was a score of 14, which is not very good.
Why? I've got access to the trail, come on, man.
Well, I don't know if that one showed up. It said that you should be visiting Utopia Park, but whatever.
I can through the trail, the trail. I'm about 60 yards from the trail.
On the other end of the spectrum, 302 East Broadway scored an 85, which is pretty good.
Wow. There you go.
So, yeah, we looked up, I think the lowest score we found, just on, you can figure out which addresses we looked up, but 2050 Carroll Lane had a score- But 2050 Carroll Lane had a score of nine, which was the lowest that we had. The highest was 404 North Main.
I'll make a formal appeal. I'm sorry. I knew it.
That's kind of the recap of our trip to Algonah.
Waste of time.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Melanie. We appreciate it. All right. Darren, I think you'll close us out this evening.
Okay. About a week and a half ago, Sean Worley and I went to Ankeny together and attended a meeting put on by the Iowa Economic Development Association or Authority. And they were discussing SRF funding, USDA funding, and CDBG funding for various water and sewer projects. The information was really great that we received there. We've got some ideas for looking into some CDBG grant possibilities for some of the lower-income areas of the community that's associated with both the water and sewer projects. We're optimized right now with the SRF funding. I was picked out of the group because Patty Cale-Finnegan was there as the moderator of the SRF and clean water funding, and she wanted me to explain the various number of projects that we have with clean water and how she feels that they are really, really set out well at this point. And it was kind of refreshing to hear some of the people in the room saying, wow, you guys are doing something that's far and away more than what we had ever envisioned we could do. A lot of the subject matter centered around a single project in a community and how that would tie to one single project for clean water funding from the SRF money. And again, we've got several projects mapped out for that over the next six to seven years, I believe. I think that we're in a good position as far as what our LMI index is, Low to Moderate Income Indexes, through our income surveys that we have done in the past. I know we're currently trying to get another one performed right now in various areas around town. But that leaves us at a disadvantage when it comes to USDA funding for water and sewer projects because their cutoff limit on population is at 10,000. While we're below that threshold, we are quite a ways above what they consider to be very dependent on government funding for helping with projects of our type. So we don't believe that there's an avenue there, but I think Melanie and Sean have already begun discussions on where we can work in step three for some of the CDBG grants. And it was a great productive meeting overall. The other item that I wanted to discuss is that we still have a concern with the neighbors of the former Nelson Nursing Home. There continues to still be conflicting information that's given to the residents down there as far as what may or may not be going on with the property. There's been contractors out there. One of the neighbors contacted a partner in the ownership of the property to find out what was going on. At this time, he had said that they were looking at demolishing the structure, while yet another one of the members of the group that owns the property said, no, we're looking at redoing the entire building. So the neighborhood's left not knowing either one. They also referred me back to the meetings that we discussed, what was going to go on with the property the first time around, and having it on film through Fairfield Media Center, which is nice. You can review that and hear that there was a discussion of an agreement that was to be between the owners of the property and the city that was to be worked out through John, our city attorney, that if the property wasn't used for the intended purpose that was discussed at the council meetings, which was an apartment-style living, no more than 15 units, that it would revert back to the zoning that it was under previously, which was an R2 from an R3. So there is some concern with the neighborhood as far as what can be done with the property, and is it going to revert back to R2? And then whatever happens from there, they would need to go back through the planning and zoning process in order to see if they can, again, amend or change the zoning to fit the needs of what the developer is looking for. I understand the property is for sale right now. It's at least listed in a couple of places as for sale. So there's concerns there. And I still want to bring this in front of the council so that we all are mindful of some of the things that we say in our meetings and how they don't necessarily get written in the official minutes that we see that are put onto our agenda. But there are nuances that happen that are picked up by filming and broadcasting live and then keeping that record. We also have the tape record of the meetings, as we're required to keep by law.
Well, let me...I think we get the point, but John, could you just address this issue? To me, it's a matter of...we don't have a record of it in a motion. Is it even legal? I mean, I know we talked about the intention, but is it even legal within the motion to do that, to have some sort of automatic revert back to a particular type of zoning? Or does the whole thing just have to go back through the process again?
Well, I'm trying to recall the rest of the outcome of the hearings ultimately. We had that understanding that we were going to reduce the number of units. It was going to be limited, as Darren suggested. That was not in the minutes, but we do have the video representation that that was the understanding. That would probably hold up if we were in litigation, but it's not really the way we want to handle ourselves as far as the ongoing. We probably ought to be asking the owners back, try to figure out if there's something at this point that can be salvaged as far as an informed position about what they want to do or don't want to do anymore. My understanding was after we got all the way through that understanding with them, ultimately, the request was withdrawn as far as the development. So they may consider the whole thing quelled by their withdrawal. They might get that kind of advice as far as where we stand right now. But still, if it's going to become a dilapidated structure as a result of their inaction, we still have to deal with it. And we can remind them of what our understandings were. Hopefully, that is a point that they would consider as far as the likely future use of the site.
Right. Well, we didn't give them a timeline. And I would suspect that if it did come before us again with a particular proposal for another structure, that we can revert back to that. If it would be something that fits an R3, then it fits...well, I don't know.
It could. It could.
Yeah, and I think right now, there's...as there was the first time around, there's a lot of misinformation that's going around. There's also a lot of conflicting information that's going around from people that the neighbors feel are in authority when it comes to who actually owns the property and what their intentions are. So I would like to see that this is brought up once again and see if we can have a discussion with the developers to get a more concrete feeling of what they believe is going to be the result of their work in that area. Again, the neighborhood, it's a very close neighborhood, very small. The streets are narrower. You know, there is a single way in, single way out. It turns into a bidirectional way in and out, a block and a half away from where the entrance of the property is. And that presents concerns for the neighbors as well, so.
Possibly we can write a letter to ask them to get their intentions.
I'll get with you. Word something. Try to invite them to the table.
That would be great. Thank you.
Is that everything, Darren?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Then entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton. Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Meeting adjourned.